Closed and the Commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or member of the Commission requests the item be removed from consent and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 4, 2022 meeting? Thank you, Dory. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed or abstained? Thank you. I will now read the consent public hearing items. Number one, request from Liberty Holdings owner 1626 Dixon Street, represented by Jeff Tucker regarding the vacation of the easternmost 255 lineal feet of the east-west right-of-way of East Jefferson Ave, located to the west of Dixon Street. Is there anyone on the Commission who wishes to hear this item tonight? Anyone in the public? This will remain on consent. Number two is a request from Holt Sales and Services, represented by Josh Holt, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan HSI Duratec Building Edition for property at 2615 Dean Ave, and for a Type II design alternative to allow a garage-loading entrance on the primary facade of the proposed workshop warehouse type building, where it is only allowed on rear or interior side facade. And just a note on this one, staff recommendation did require additional landscaping for screening the property on the east side, so, and the applicant did agree to that, so we just wanted to make that note. Is there anyone on the Commission who would like to hear this item? Anyone in the public? All right, number two will remain on consent. Number three, a request from RM Madden Construction, represented by Michael Madden, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property at 4200 Southeast Seventeenth Street, and for a Type II design alternative to allow construction of a house Type B in an N3A neighborhood district with a waiver of the requirement for installation of public sidewalk along street frontages. Is there anyone on the Commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Number three will remain on consent. Number four, a request from University Storage LLC, represented by Will Matthews, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan Cube Smart Storage on East University for property located in the vicinity of 1901 East University Ave, and for Type II design alternatives, just A, allow buildings with 0% transparency per code on a street facing facade when the requirement is 12% per story. Is there anyone on the Commission who wants to hear this item? Anyone in the public? So we have items one through four on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to move consent?
I'll move.
Thank you, Abby. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Motion carries ten zero.
Thank you, Jason. We will now move on to public hearing items. Item number five is continued from the July 21, 2022 meeting. It is a request from Mr. Salah for a review and approval of a public hearing site plan ice cream shop for the property located at 3510 Cottage Grove Ave, and for the Type II design alternatives A and B. And Michael will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Michael Delp, planning staff. The applicant here is proposing a project at 3510 Cottage Grove Avenue. He is requesting review and approval of the public hearing site plan ice cream shop at 3510 Cottage Grove Avenue, and for the following Type II design alternatives: reduction of the required primary frontage coverage from 85% to 23%, and waive the requirement to meet the non-primary frontage built-to-zone of 0 to 10 feet along 35th Street. Here is an aerial of the parcel here. It is at the intersection of Cottage Grove Avenue and 35th Street. The parcel contains 7,050 square feet and is 0.162 acres. The existing use on site is a vacant surface lot, and the current zoning district is MX-1. And just to provide some context of what they're proposing here on site in terms of the ice cream shop, the building is located here on the southwest corner of the lot, with the parking oriented towards Cottage Grove Avenue and 37th here. The garbage on the back end of here is oriented towards the alleyway. Their primary frontage here is on the Cottage Grove, with their primary entrance here. They have parking oriented here towards the south on the lot. Here are some elevations, just to give you an idea of what they're proposing in terms of building. They'll have a patio here and a balcony oriented towards the eastern part of the building, towards the parking lot, on the eastern portion of the building. Here's just some more to show you an example of what's being proposed. So for staff recommendation on this property, it is a storefront building type. That's what it's going under for building typologies. For storefront building types, there is a maximum primary frontage coverage requirement per the building type regulation. Kind of going around here, sorry about that. There's a requirement for a maximum 85% primary frontage coverage. They're trying to decrease that amount to 23%. Staff's opinion on this is it isn't feasible to meet this primary frontage coverage, given the nature of the parcel, and to allow for a surface parking lot within the parcel for the building type. For their non-primary frontage built-to-zone, staff believes that citing the building in the northeast corner of the parcel will allow the building and the use to access the full pedestrian realm, meeting that full 0 to 10-foot distance, and having the patio oriented towards the sidewalks on each side would fully access the pedestrian realm for the walkability of the neighborhood. Traditionally, in the Drake neighborhood, too, there are corner store buildings with their parking oriented in the rear lot, and staff recommendation would be to have the building oriented in the northeast corner and the parking lot behind oriented towards the alleyway. So staff recommends the approval of the reduction of the primary frontage coverage from 85% to 23%. We recommend denial on waiving the built-to-zone of 0 to 10 feet on the non-primary frontage Here were some concerns that we received from the neighborhood organization, the Drake Neighborhood Organization. There was concerns about a two-story building and having it block their view of the street. Concerns were expressed with the increased car traffic on the already busy street there. The neighborhood had already requested a traffic study on 31st to get a pedestrian walkway, so they're worried about the increased traffic with the building placement there. There was some concern about the placement of the alleyway on the back end in the southwest corner of the proposed plan also. There was a concern about future use also that was given by the neighborhood. And we did not receive any comments. Any questions?
Can you go back to the site plan for a sec?
Sure.
I'm wondering how far from the north property line the building is proposed?
So it's within the 0 to 5-foot built-to-zone. They're not meeting the 0 to 10-foot required on the non-primary frontage coverage here on the other street.
You want to shift it all the way to the east?
Correct. It'll be in the northeast corner here. That's what staff is recommending. It's currently meeting the 0 to 5-foot built-to-zone for storefront requirements. It is not meeting the 0 to 10. So ideally, it would be in this northeast corner, meeting the 0 to 10-foot built-to-zone and the 0 to 5-foot built-to-zone.
So I guess I'm sort of the same. So right now, there is a parking lot there. Are they talking about disturbing the parking lots that's there with the building in this current plan? And we're proposing, we're going to take that whole parking lot out and build a new one that may also not have two logical entries for traffic flow, and instead have another parking lot that may have parking density challenges and parking entry and exit challenges?
So I believe the existing proposed site layout is to maximize the parking that's existing there with the entrances onto both primary streets. They're wanting to cite the building back here to use the green space that's currently existing.
Is that alleyway usable, so you could have two entry and exits, as is sort of proposed here with this limited parking setup?
It's currently a gravel parking lot. I don't think we'd want access off of there.
Yeah, they could, a couple things to be looked at. I think it, I wouldn't presume that one driveway wouldn't be adequate, but also, we have had commercial development that kind of is in a neighborhood setting where they've improved the alley and used that part of the alley. So I think if, if in fact, we came back with a site plan, I would expect that that would be part of the dialogue and looked at, would be just how that all flows and whether or not it can be done onsite. But that would be an option that we've done elsewhere. And just to piggyback, I recognize there's parking there now, but there's no building there now. From our perspective on the planning side, we look, this is new development. We do respect that they are trying to utilize, I have no problem, you know, understanding the intent or the desire to utilize what's there, just to minimize cost. But we thought, from our perspective, that the notion of having the building out at the corner, which is what the, if you read the description of storefront building, if you look at the character of the Drake, broader Drake neighborhood, that is more fitting in our mind to kind of fit within that character. It's also, obviously, the way the design standards have been constructed for this district, that that building should be out there. And so, since it's brand-new development, other than some existing paving versus renovating an existing building, we felt it was appropriate to do so with that, you know, that could be achieved.
And I'm assuming they're opposed to shifting the building to the other place and doing a whole new parking lot?
Correct.
And did they identify the cost impact to you? What's your opinion of the cost impact?
They have not.
All right, any other questions? Thanks, Michael. Is the applicant present? Please state your name, address. You have 10 minutes, and then just sign in when you're done.
Patrick Shepherd, Civil Engineering Consultants, 2486th Street in Urbandale.
I wanted to point out how isolated this particular lot is. It's right here at the southwest corner of.
Sir, could you speak into the microphone? I'm sorry.
Maybe. Yes, we can. All right. I can, that works. All right. I want to point out how isolated this particular MX-1 site is. It's right there at the southwest corner of Cottage Grove and 35th. If you look at entire area from University Avenue to 235, and from 28th over to 42nd, other than the shops at Roosevelt, this is the only MX-1 property in that entire area. It's predominantly residential. There are some heavier uses up along University, as would be expected. There's a few churches in the area, but as you travel from Cottage Grove to, from 42nd to 28th, and 35th from University, down past Kingman, it's predominantly residential.
With large.
There's a little bigger area than what we saw earlier, but there's some pretty large setbacks. Most of these houses are probably at least 25 feet. There's several, you know, along Cottage Grove, the entire length of that street, that are probably closer to 40 or 50. Setbacks get pretty large as you go south along 35th. And those three structures that exist at this intersection, the two homes and the church, are all about 35 to 45 feet away from the intersection of the sidewalk. So we feel placing this building up, you know, cramming this building up in the corner would look out a place at that wide-open intersection. And as you're traveling south on 35th, it's going to block the view of those houses to the south. A little history on the site, there was a building on this site that was torn down in 2014, and according to the county appraiser, that building was built in 1930. So a building has existed exactly where we want to put our building for 84 of the last 92 years. So that was in 2000. It looks like there was a house on the lot also. 2001, the house is gone. It was in 2009. The parking lot was just constructed in 2007, I believe, for the businesses that were there at the time. Park lot that shows the parking being used. So, I mean, to us, it seemed like a logical place to put the building. We consider this kind of redevelopment, since it was, you know, building there for so long. The parking lot's been there. It's in great shape. It would serve our purpose. Provides the required amount of parking stalls for what we are proposing for this type of use in this zoning. You know, the environmentally conscious thing to do would be to use what's there. I don't think redevelopment means take everything down to the ground and haul half the stuff to the dump site or the landfill somewhere. It also increases, you know, expenses for the owner. If the parking lot's there and can be used, you know, why not incorporate that into your And that's kind of what it looks like now. The building was, like I said, was taken out in 2014, so from 2015 on, it's looked like that.
We're not preferring to make any changes.
Too many changes to the parking lot. We already have to remove like a three or four-foot strip along the north side of the lot to provide the seven-foot buffer required along Cottage Grove, and then doing that would cause us to put in that same amount on the south side. So we keep the same amount of parking from north to south. So here are some photos of what the building looked like back in 1999. A brick facade. I think that, if that's a seven-foot door, this building was probably at least 18 to 20-foot tall on the front. In the early 2000s, it was Mission Oak Gallery. You can see the facade sticks up, it's probably, what, 18 to 24 feet? And then the other side there, on the east side of the building, is probably in the 16 to 18-foot range. Our building is a one-story building, 16 feet all the way around. Brick on all four sides. Just a couple more over the years. Nice brick storefront, plenty of glass, facing Cottage Grove, the outdoor seating, patio Shot of the intersection, see how wide open it is? You know, that building was placed up within 10 feet of that sidewalk there. In front of that house, you can see it would, it would stand out. It would block the view of all those houses going down the street. There's another copy of the site plan. Those shrubs within the buffer here, I think they're like two or three foot high, up against a three-foot fence. So no matter where you're at on this intersection, you're going to be able to see the building, whether it be walking down Cottage Grove, or if you're walking on 35th, since all the parking is on the south side of the lot there, you're going to be able to look right down the drive and see the outdoor seating. Since this is the only MX-1 site, the only use of this nature for several blocks, you know, I think that in itself promotes walkability. It's not going to be where the building is on the lot. If somebody wants to walk to this from three or four blocks away, the decision to do so isn't going to be where the building is. It's going to be the service and the goods that they provide, and that'll decide whether or not they return. Just a couple of the, I want to address a couple of comments that may have come up earlier. It's only called a two-story. Now, it's a one-story building, 16-foot high. It's going to be shorter than the building that was there previously. You know, traffic, anytime you, you know, any use like this that hasn't been incorporated in the neighborhood is obviously going to increase traffic, but it's meant to provide walkability. I think we've done that with the outdoor seating, high visibility off both streets. The lot provides the required amount of parking. Trash is normally in the backside of the building, hidden from view along the streets, as we've shown it. Future use, and the owner wants to, wants this to be a long-time thing, that his family and, you know, kids can continue to operate, so it's always hard to predict what the future might be. The alley, we thought that was a good buffer for the residents. I think improving that and incorporating that into a new parking lot would put too much traffic on there. So if we did have a, if the building was to the east and we had a single lot, or a lot with a single entrance, and it's only five or six cars, there's a good chance someone would pull in there, the lot would be full. There's not a lot of maneuvering space when the lot's full, so they try to back up on a Cottage Grove. So we think this one way, access through the existing parking lot that's been there since 2007, provides the safest traffic flow through the property. That I ask in answering questions, I might have.
Question. If the parking lot was to be shifted, what would the traffic flow then look like? Would it mainly be the alleyway being an entry point, and then a second one off on Cottage? Or essentially, two entries off of Cottage, the alleyway and the?
It'd be too small to have two entrances off of Cottage. It would either be one entrance off of Cottage, or improving the alley, which indicated, I think, right now, leaving it now, there's going to be less traffic, because it's a better, a good buffer from the residents behind it. So it'd probably be a small lot with three stalls on each side, so when you pull in, somebody might come down the street and pull in quick. Oh, it's full. Now what do I do? I can't turn around, I got to back up.
Any other question?
If you were to move it from the west to the east and not be using the parking lot, what is the cost differential for that layout?
The owner said probably about $60,000, the new parking lot, which I'm sure he'd rather put into the building.
$60,000?
Yeah.
What's the total project cost?
I.
Got it, okay. For the house to the south, what is the distance between the porch and the sidewalk? You're saying that we'd be blocking that view, but I guess if we're moving over to the far east of it, and you're saying we need to, you know, with the city's distance they're requiring, will you actually be blocking that view, or will you just be aligned with the porch? Is the house directly south of it? So if you're talking about the requirements the city's wanting?
That's probably 20 feet. It's the closest one. As you go fa, as you go farther south, there, they get much.
So if you're lined with a porch, we get rid of the issue of the view problem, and also be in line with what the city's looking for, right?
I don't know if aligning with the porch would be close enough. That house sits back farther than 10 feet.
Okay. And last one. So regarding sustainability, I mean, obviously, this is the third ice cream shop in 16 blocks, right? On this street alone. So I'm curious, if we're thinking that maybe we can't sustain three ice cream shops in 16 blocks, is there an actual business case for it being more sustainable? That building's more reusable on the west than the east?
They will serve, you know, sandwiches, breakfast. It's going to be more than just ice cream shop, and that was, when we started this a couple of years ago, we were thinking about putting a, you know, ice cream truck or a trailer on the lot. And then it's evolved into this, where you will serve more than just ice cream, so it's more like a, you know, cafe or a small restaurant.
So size of it is sustainable as a business, as a restaurant on the site, and it makes more sense to be on the west than the east for a business sustainability perspective?
I have a quick question. So aside from the desire to maintain the existing parking lot, is there, in terms of, like, other challenges to moving the building, there don't appear to be any topography challenges? It looks pretty flat. Are there any utility challenges, or is the parking lot kind of the sole reason?
It's part of the parking lot, and the fact that the building was there for 84 of the last 92 years, why not, you know, put one back where it was? It's going to be nice and well it's there, provide a great neighborhood service, amenity. There's no utility challenges. The water's in Cottage Grove, and the sanitary sewer's in 35th. But, you know, like I said, why tear something up and cause an expense and send stuff to the landfill if you don't have to?
Are there any other similar setups in the area?
I'm sure there's something up on University, you know, the library's just up the.
Yeah, library's the exact same configuration, two blocks away.
Yeah, it's up on University, yeah. And their building sits, yeah, it is, just like ours, it sits back ways. If there were other MX-1 uses along this block, and they were all, you know, up in line, I could certainly see the point of moving this up. And since this is so isolated, you know, the use in itself is going to provide walkability and encourage people to go to the site. Especially being on a corner lot, over front, Cottage Grove. I'm sure there's a lot of people walking along Cottage Grove with all the residents.
All right, if there are no other questions, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone opposed? Please come up. You have five minutes. State your name, address, and sign in when you're done.
Jim Stewart, 1073 35th Street, basically across the street. Okay, it's an ice cream shop. There's going to only be four parking spaces and one handicapped. You've been buying Snookies in the spring. It's just packed. People waiting out on Beaver. And I'm expecting the same thing here. Library is a block away, library café, block away. Library is a block away, library café, block away. I don't know how many times I've called, I love the library, but I don't know how many times I've called the police to say, okay, tick of these cars that are just parked along here illegally at peak times. Third, what happens when this doesn't make it? Is this going to turn into a bar? I don't know. So I'm just saying, I'm worried about the traffic, I'm worried about turning it into a bar, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition? Carol?
Hi, my name is Carol Mahur, I live in Ward III, zip code 50312. For, when you talk about walkability, that means you don't feature parking, and the way this is cited on the lot is that you're featuring the parking. So that's why the parking should be in the back. And if you build parking, they will use it. So I'd strongly recommend that you add more bike parking spots, I think there's maybe a couple of racks thrown in there. And if you want to encourage people to come, you don't show them where to park right up front. You show them that you're, you like bicyclists, and you like them to spend their money, your money there, and you encourage them, the neighbors, to walk. Also, the house that's just south has sort of annexed this parking lot into their unit, they're the same owner. So it's kind of used as a personal parking lot, it appears, so it's not, it's not quite exactly a parking lot today, it's being used by the owner for personal parking, or sold for, as personal parking. And really, this is Des Moines, and we should think like a city. We are an urban center, and this is a place where people walk, and there's lots, going to be lots of students around there. I'm pleased to hear it, it sounds like it's going to be a year-round organization, year-round business. That means that the sidewalks will get shoveled year-round versus just, versus not, if it's not open year-round, they may not do their duty on shoveling. So I think moving it up into an urban look and feel, moving the parking to the back is really the right way to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Is there anyone else in opposition to this item? Or neutral? Seeing none, the applicant has five minutes for rebuttal or to answer questions. And just please state your name and address, since you didn't speak before.
My name is Abdul Hakim Sala, my address is 1080 35th Street. I am opening the ice cream shop, which is the name of it, is a sweet lounge, and we're going to be serving breakfast all day, and there's going to be dessert, and there's going to be a lot of good drinks and popsicles, and good things for kids and families around my neighborhood. We are not like the bar down the street from us, we're not serving alcohol, and we, like the, when the other person said, we live in the neighborhood, and we, we've been looking for this for over 40 years, and we saw all the potential about it, you know, it's a good place, good place, good location. And since we bought the property, we've been maintaining it from the A to the Z, all my neighborhood loved it, they loved the way like we took over and we made a beautiful corner for all my neighborhood without putting anything into it. And all we put in so far is just money, but we're okay with it to make our neighbors happy. So for saying like, I'm using it as a personal parking lot, I do have two kids, and they grown and they gain cars, you know, which is, I'm using it temporary. As soon as my business is established, we're going to put a garage in the back of our house, that way we don't have to use the parking lot. For the traffic, I know we don't have enough space for parking lot, but we have a lot of street around us, they have a side parking street, which is 36, and even Cottage Grove, even Kingman's, you know, which is a lot of my neighbor, they would just feel free to walk, we're not too far. And we're not like in the corner of a bad traffic street like Snooki's. Snooki's is in a really tough intersection, which is, I live too, not too far from it, and I see how the traffic gets there in the summertime. But our goal is, a lot of our customer will be our neighbors, or the guy down, five blocks down, able to walk, entertain, and we're not looking to upset the neighbors, or to make somebody don't like our business, and, and I'm building this one for my wife and my daughters and my son, and we're looking to continue to grandkids, to grand-grandkids. We're not looking to, to let it go. And also, the reason I want to put the building in the back, I think it would be best for, because if you put it in the front also, it will kind of block the corner of the 35th Street, when people coming out to turn right or left in the 35th, which is you're coming from Cottage Grove, and when you come into the intersection of 35th, which is, this is two-stop sign, the one on the east and one in the west. And then I used to have a huge bush in the corner of the la, I used to have a huge bush in the corner of the property, and then I removed it, because within one year, we had three accidents in that corner, because the bush was about just eight foot tall, and with a lot of accident involved about it. So I moved it, because I felt like maybe it would kind of open up for the neighbor. And since then, it's been less accident, people able to see it, to view better. And it's now, if you put the building there, it would kind of block the view, and then also, like, we don't have the problem to put it in the front, if you guys want us to do it, you know, we go ahead to tear the concrete, it just, we just try to kind of save as much as we can to start a business. We are local, we're not from out of town, we're not a big company or big investor. You know, I came to America 21 years ago, I had $25 in my pocket, and I'm trying to be, you know, open something for me and my family for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? I do, I was hoping Michael could come up and address the question from the gentleman about the bar.
Sure, it's currently zoned MX-1, which wouldn't allow for the bar use. It would allow for restaurant use, there would be a need to get a liquor license, and the maximum amount of alcohol they could sell there in a restaurant type would be 50%. They'd have to have 50% of gross receipts be food or preparation of food.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? All right?
I think this one's for staff. What was the reasoning behind, the reasoning for the parking lot being shifted? I don't, yeah?
Sure, I can go ahead and cover that, Michael. Just going back to some of, you know, just, I'm going to try to kind of summarize some points that have been hit on. You know, Drake neighborhood is a traditional walkable neighborhood, there's examples of other corner stores in the area, I think 28th and Kingman is an example off the top of my head. And we just felt that it made more sense to put the building out front, to fit into this traditional character that you see around it, than at the back, which putting parking in the front is more of a suburban solution. And that's been mentioned tonight as well. Our design guidelines for storefront buildings anticipated that, so as we developed our code and we developed design standards, that's what, you know, why that the relief is needed. You know, because as we developed, how we want the city to develop over time, redevelop is, as, you know, not everything that exists today conforms, but things redevelop, and as that happens, the, the thought behind Chapter 135 was to work at an area such as this, to that more urban format, so I don't know if that helps answer the question, or...
If you... Yeah, no, just really quickly, so if we talk about tradition, I mean, it's been there 84 out of the 92 years, the houses there have been as long, is there, so I don't know why we're trying, I don't know if, why we're trying to change that, it was designed, so we're questioning how it was designed earlier, is it possible to leave it there, but even move it closer up front, or is there some way we can do this without tearing up all that concrete and throwing it back into our rivers and all of that stuff? Can we find a solution?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, I think this, that ultimately, those are the kinds of things the commission has to weigh out, and so, and we thought about that as staff. Yeah, there has been a building, I mean, this isn't historic preservation in the sense that we're trying to respect the specific development pattern of this lot, and any new building should be where the old ones were. It's about looking at just kind of a broader development pattern, and, and that, the urban nature of it, and trying as we have new development, that's the perspective we took as staff. And I, I don't have any, you know, if the commission feels that, you know, the reusing the pavement is more important, that's fine, it's your decision to make, but as staff, in balancing it all out, we ultimately said, you know, that things are going to redevelop, things that exist today don't always conform, we'll, we'll stick with our recommendation of keeping it within the standards of the code. I will say that we would, if there was a need to offer some level of setback relief, we'd be supportive of that, but just putting the building all the way at the back, I mean, I, I think the outdoor patio deck space is a wonderful idea, and I would expect that that would be in front of this building on the side street, so the building really wouldn't be at zero, the building would be at, you know, 10 feet, I, I think the drawing showed that at about 11 or 12, a couple of feet ex, you know, you know, that could be administratively reviewed with a Type 1, if it was needed to be 12 feet. And, and that would still also put the outdoor seating area on the east side of the building, so afternoon sun, you know, the building's blocking the sun, which matches what they've done. So those are, those are the thought processes we went through. But again, ultimately, just to close my comments, this is your guys' decision to make, this is just our recommendation.
I, I would tend to support the applicant's site plan here, understanding the argument about redevelopment and, but I think it's compelling that this is the only MX-1 place in this neighborhood, and this corner is really open. I think that having the building all the way on the east side is going to feel very strange on this intersection. And I think that the traffic flow that exists on that site plan already works quite well, coming in off Cottage Grove and exiting onto 35th. So, you know, I kind of understand the letter of the ordinance, but I think in this case, the site plan that they've developed really makes the most sense.
Chris, do you really, I'm just making sure, so right now, we're asking questions of staff because we're still open, is that right? Before we close and deliberate, is that?
Right.
Because I have one staff question.
Yeah, you can still ask any question.
Okay, so as far as the, the staff question, so if this, if this building had still been here, and we're rehabilitating that building versus it being now green, would staff look at this differently? Is it just because it is a new development is why we want to make sure it conforms versus if they just waited and left some studs, we'd be fine with where it was?
But actually, if it was an existing building, the code has existing, they'd have existing building rights, we wouldn't even be here. I mean, you know, do you know what I'm getting at? So it wouldn't even be a question, they would be allowed to renovate the building and, and make their, whatever site improvements they needed.
Yeah, so just because, just because it got torn down first, before, now, now we're sitting here, it's torn down, we're trying to rebuild, that's why we're here.
Yeah, and, and that might seem maybe punitive in this particular case, because it's a small lot, but that's, I mean, if you think about all the stuff that we review, that you see, that we, we see even more of, redevelopment is what happens in Des Moines, we don't have, we have very little greenfield development, so the notion of a building coming down and then the site being redeveloped is, that's normal, that's a normal everyday occurrence from our perspective.
All right, I will close the public hearing, so that we can entertain a motion, it sounds like some people might have a motion ready.
I just wanted to, on one perspective, I agree so fully in some ways, and actually, ironically, I'm actually more in favor of moving the building to the east in this case, if someone is in that area, it makes a lot of sense to me, this has already come down, 17% cost differential is actually less than what we would actually force on someone on a utility bearing, however, at the same time, I do think that there is, there can be significant traffic impacts and parking impacts. So not to make this motion, but to float out there, I would be of the mind of saying I would move staff on this if traffic can come back and demonstrate that there will not be any adverse traffic or parking impacts on this site, because I'm not entirely sure that's possible. If we're able to keep the same, if we're able to keep the same traffic safety and able to keep the same parking accessibility, 17% doesn't seem to bother me as much, and I, I sort of think that corner, having the building as we were wanting it going forward, doesn't seem to be negative, but that's my own personal opinion on that one. So I'm not making a motion yet, but that would be the way I would, I would love to have us think about it, is if it isn't going to impact anything, fine, but I think I agree with this pattern, it would be hard for me to see how this, moving it to the right isn't a safety issue. Or to the east, I'm sorry. Yes, I believe that moving it to the east could become a safety or parking access issue.
Can they put the recommendations on the screen?
Yeah, we'll, we'll flip to the next slide. In short. In short, staff was recommending approval of the, the frontage, the reduction in the required amount of frontage, and then denial of the setback request. You'll have to forgive us, running the mouse from clear over there is a little bit clunky. Yeah, what the staff recommendation is, is yes, approve the request to not have whatever the, the frontage along Cottage, but, but move it to the east, so it'd be within 10 feet of the east property line. There we go, we got there.
I think I would support what Chris said, I, I feel like we have an opportunity to maybe do better in terms of, you know, new development, we don't have the opportunity to build a new building every day, so let's get that right versus parking lot, I understand the sustainability component, but the, the building can also be sustainable and might be there longer anyways, it has a longer life potentially, so I would propose moving staff, but then, you know, with the caveat that I think the traffic part needs to be studied and proven out, I don't know if the applicant has been able to do that yet or not, but that could be the challenge there, so I would support what Chris said.
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor, I do have a quick question, that, it would have to go through traffic, and, doesn't everything have to go through traffic when we're doing it?
Yeah, I mean, any site plan is getting reviewed through by our traffic and transportation division staff, I think maybe the point that you're making is the, the drawing that they've reacted to is the drawing that's in front of you, because that's what the applicant's provided to date, so I think that's a fair observation. And if, if you did act on that, they would have the ability, you know, should we, you know, get further into it, to apply, to come back to you guys with, you know, a second request with new information.
Okay.
So is, is, so the motion then, I guess, is moving staff conditional on traffic demonstrating that the movement, that complying with staff will not have a negative safety or a negative parking access impact? Is that fair?
Sure.
You can include that in there, but the, the reality is, is that if they can, it might, it's a little bit unnecessary, because it's kind of, they, if they, if they submit something that complies with the setback, and traffic and transportation approves it, then it's all, you know, it's assumed, you know, then that's, all through that process that's taking place. So I'm, I'm talking what I'm thinking, so I, I don't think there's any harm including that language in, in the, in the motion, because, I mean, it's kind of understood, but if you want, if that's better, go ahead and...
Well, I guess, so here's, I guess, here's where I'm going with that, so let's make sure my intent is not misunderstood, so that people don't, so what I'm saying is, right now, we have a parking setup that makes sense if we have, you know, people coming in off of Cottage and out off of 35th, that makes sense, there's a safety benefit to that, right?
That makes sense, there's a safety benefit to that, right? There's also safety benefit theoretically, if, you know, depending on what we think the traffic here is, I, I understand the concern with respect to Snooki's, but Snooki's is very unique, and this is a very quiet set of streets as well, with a lot of street parking. If you came behind in street parking around here, probably shouldn't be driving, there's a, there's a site issue, right? So I think that there is, but there are, you know, right now, we will have a traffic flow impact of this configuration of this in and out situation, and we'll have a number of spaces on the site that can be safely put onto that site. That should be our baseline. If we can say, hey, I'll shift it over here, I can now come back with a configuration that is equal or is as safe or safer, sweet. But I guess I'm, I have a hard time believing that's possible, given, I mean, it seems like there need a lot of work here to actually ensure that we'll have the same level of safety with two ins and outs on the same street.
Yeah, I mean, that's going to be a little bit of a, I don't know that our transportation division is going to get into that level. I mean, they're going to look at driveway placement, they're going to, this isn't a use that generate, that has enough traffic that'll generate a parking study need. You know, from a parking analysis, you know, our code actually, you know, you can count on street parking, so, you know, they may end up with a, a little bit less parking spaces, but that'd be something that, unless it's substantially less, you know, like, you know, staff would probably, it'd be within a type one range, we'd work with them with that. I, I sense that you, you kind of, what you're, maybe I'm misreading this, but I sense that what you really would like to do is continue this and have them explore this, all this, and then come back, because I, I feel like maybe you don't want to just leave it up to staff. Which is fine, but I just wonder if the better avenue for you is to continue it, if that's truly what you're looking for, is to have this report back. Because if you, if you go with the motion, we're going to work with them, and we'll probably get to a place that staff is comfortable with, and we'll approve it.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, maybe there's confusion. I don't want to get to a point where staff basically says, yep, it's on the east, and yep, we've just not done enough of a study to know if there's any impacts, and this is good enough, so then, yep, you're forced to go to the east. We're forcing them to go to the east and forcing them to change the configuration of this parking lot, the configuration of the traffic flow that will occur on this corner that we have right now, we know has a certain baseline safety level. And so, yes, I would like to make sure that we are, if we pass this.
Our, our traffic and transportation division is going to look at it the same way they already have, which is, it doesn't require a traffic study. They're going to look at how close is, are the driveways to the intersection, and, and, you know, is there adequate space, you know, for maneuvering? And, you know, they'll look at some rudimentary stuff, but there's not going to be, like, no matter where the building is on the site, we're just making assumption based, assumptions based off of our perception that this is safe. I mean, you know what I mean, there's not a traffic study today to tell us what we think we're seeing. So that level of scrutiny is not going to be, the level of scrutiny that we've been afforded today is not going to be different down the road with a different configuration.
That, yeah, that makes sense.
So you're saying if we pass this motion, it won't actually do what we're intending, which is what we're intending is saying, prove that it is not going to be negatively impacting moves to the east. We're saying, nah, we'll come, we're just going to say it's fine enough, it's, so it's good, let's go to the east. And now we're going to be adding that cost, we're going to be reducing the number of parking spaces, and we're going to be reducing the number of reasonable ins and outs, safe ins and safe ins and outs then. Is that?
Yeah, what I'm saying is from, that, I, I, you, just to be to the point, this doesn't, this is, doesn't rise to the level of warranting a traffic study from the city's processes. Our engineering staff would look at the new configuration and based off of their professional expertise and, and our standards for like how far driveways have to be apart and those things, would make some, some interpretation decisions. But there's not going to be like a traffic study in the sense that I think you're hoping that will come and prove that it's equally as safe. But we don't, we're making an assumption today, we don't have a traffic study today tell us that this is, how safe is this? We, we don't know, we're just assuming because we sense that maybe it is.
Well, then, yeah, and I, I've seen a lot of those traffic studies now, so I guess I would retract my motion and say that, no, I, I do not want to go to the east if, if we aren't going to do the work to figure out if that's suitable. So, yeah, I guess, I'm sorry, I want to pull my motion then.
No, you don't have a motion, Kayla does.
Oh, sorry, sorry. One second, so I would like to pull hers, can we do that?
You're friendly, you're friendly.
That's a friendly amendment, yes.
So you're looking to continue the item so we can see their revision if it works? Is, is that what I'm understanding?
I think that, I don't know if that's been actually proposed as an amendment.
I would like to add a, a comment from the safety side. If, if, that's what we're considering here, how would it impact safety to remove what's currently there and shift the building to the east side? I think the fact that moving the building and following staff, the staff recommendation will remove a driveway. So that by itself helps with the safety of that intersection. Having one driveway in from Cottage Road and then using the alley, that right there should satisfy the safety piece. In addition, I think what Jason is getting to is that traffic and transportation will conduct a review that is within their purview, which includes that safety piece as well. It will not trigger the traffic study, but it, it does include a safety piece. That's where the whole driveway conversation comes in. That's why I'm sure this site will not be able to have two entrances from Cottage Road, and I think that will be a major impact to the safety of this intersection as a whole, not only for the traffic, but also for the pedestrians and the bicyclists that will be frequenting this site. So I will approve, I want to prove, I will support the, the motion that's in place, but I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion or consideration.
What's the motion in place again?
The motion is from Kayla, and it is to move staff with some language about, you know, traffic.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I don't really know how to word that, but coordination with city staff on the parking lot as it's on the west side, you know, the curb cuts, et cetera, just to make sure that it complies. But it seems like that's part of the process anyway, so probably unnecessary.
So we're moving.
Moving staff.
Moving staff for them to review the building staying as is with what happened.
She's, if I could, I, I think, where I heard you last is you're just moving the staff rec, and, and which is, the, the building doesn't need to be wider as it occupies Cottage Grove, but it does need to be slid over, and so it's within 10 feet roughly of the east property line along 35th Street.
Can you show me that on the map, please?
Yeah, it's, if we can go back to the, go to the site plan and leave it at the site plan. So the building is just going to slide over, so it'd be in the corner. So. Right. Does that make, does that help?
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Kayla, move staff. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. And I think we need an affirmative motion, don't we, or what?
I'm sorry, I was still, you guys moved so fast. Did I have four for, so I had Francis, Johnny, Emily, for the, in support of the motion, who was in favor? Johnny, Emily.
Kayla and Francis.
Kayla and Francis, so the, okay, yeah, so the motion fell as four to six.
We need enough, to move forward, I believe we need an affirmative motion, correct? Is that?
Yeah, you would need somebody to make the, a, a new motion.
A new motion.
It could be, it doesn't have, I mean, it could be approval as proposed, it could be something in the middle, you know, whatever you want, it needs to be a motion.
A motion, I'm not making a motion, but a motion to approval as, as is, is what the applicant is asking for, correct? I would like to make that motion.
Okay. So it's, yeah, approval of the request as proposed.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thanks, Francis. And all opposed, please raise your right hand. All right, appreciate everyone here.
Motion carries seven zero, or seven three, excuse me.
All right.
Just Johnny, Emily, and Kayla on the, okay.
All right, we are going to move on to item number six, a request from Jonathan Palmer for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for property at 4125 East 30th, and for type two design alternative to allow a driveway expansion that exceeds the maximum allowed front yard area. Shiroshi will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Shiroshi Chakravarti, Planning Staff. Item number six is a public hearing site plan for a residential property. The applicant is proposing to, to add a driveway, additional second driveway onto his property in order to construct a circle driveway. As a result of this proposed driveway expansion, the total impervious area for the front yard is exceeding the, the required amount, which is 25% of the front yard, so it puts it to about 54%, which exceeds the maximum allowed front yard impervious area. The property is on 4125 East 30th Street. Here's an, an aerial shows you, the property is in a residential area, N1B neighborhood district, and there is residential zoning and uses adjacent to the, to the subject property. So it's in the Douglas Acres neighborhood. And here's some photographs, which I'll try to explain what's going on here. So this driveway approach that you see is the existing driveway. The applicant is, has applied for a right-of-way permit to add a second driveway, which is going to be here. And then the, the two driveways are going to be joined, forming a circle driveway, which is, which is essentially why the impervious area is exceeding the allowed 25%. A few more photographs of the, of the neighborhood. I have a sketch that I can show if you have questions later, but I will, I will basically try to explain staff's rationale and what is being recommended here. So with the addition of the second driveway and the circle driveway, what would happen is that it would add approximately 1,114 square feet of paving to the front yard, which will bring the impervious surface area to about 54%. Since the property is zoned N1B and it has over 100 feet of frontage, a circle driveway is allowed. However, because it's 54%, staff feels that this is excessive. The applicant can modify the design, and with that, staff believes that, that with the modification of the, of the design, they can put about 650 square feet of paving, which would bring the impervious area to about 38%. So that will still be above the 25%, however, it is below 40%, which is typically historically what staff has been comfortable supporting if it exceeds the minimum 25%. So by making that modification, that would bring the impervious area to 38%. And I'll go back to the aerial so I can explain how staff is proposing that modification be made. So currently, if you, if you look at the aerial, the, the driveway approaches are about 14 feet and 18 feet in width, and they circle around. Staff thinks that 14 to 18 feet width of the driveway circling around is probably not necessary. The applicant could narrow it down to about 10 feet in width. And if the width of the driveway is narrowed down to 10 feet, that is what would bring the 1,114 square feet of paving down to about 650 square feet, which would bring the impervious area down to about 38%. So staff is recommending denial of the type two design alternative request, however, staff would be supportive if the applicant would, would consider modification to the design to reduce the width of the driveway to 10, 10 feet, which would allow the front yard impervious surface to be around 38%. So staff is recommending that the, the type two design alternative be denied, and that with that condition that the new drive approach and the circle driveway be modified to 10 feet wide, which would add up to 650 square feet of additional paving in the front yard, which is about 38% of the front yard.
Shiroshi, I think Burt has the site plan pulled up, I think it maybe got dropped out of the presentation.
Yeah.
I think it did the applicant submit, I just want to, we go to the document camera, just, I think it helps illustrate the proposal.
Yeah.
Slide it up a little bit there, Burt.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Burt. So as I was mentioning, you can see here the, the width, the width of the, the driveway here is 14 feet. This is the existing driveway, but over here where we have the circle drive, it's about 18 feet wide. So if the applicant were to consider narrowing that down to about 10 feet, that is what would bring the, bring it down to 38% impervious surface rather than the 54% that we see with his proposed, with the applicant's proposed design. Staff believes that the 10 feet is probably sufficient for parking as well as getting in and out of the vehicle, and therefore, that's, that's the reason that 10 feet is being recommended.
And just to clarify, that's 10 feet for the, the L, that's the circle, the 14 and the 18, it's not, that calculation does not, is not addressing the primary drive approach, which the drawing shows is 18 feet, generally speaking. So it's really about that circle and the additional kind of loop through.
Yeah, it's, it's just this. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
If the, if the applicant was proposing permeable pavers or permeable concrete with this same, how would you approach that? So if they came through and said, we're going to use permeable pavers here, how would you consider this then?
I, I believe that the 25% also includes semi-permeable surfaces, and Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I can, there is for the, the, the front yard areas where you get the 25%, but for the total site, there is an allowance above and beyond. I'll have to look for semi-permeable pavement, but I don't, I think you're right, I don't know that that applies to the front yard. I'll, I can double check as the presentation's made.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious, is, is the intent of the, I'm curious about the intent of the ordinance in this case, and so, since we do know there's difference in front yard versus overall, it's probably not just primarily water runoff, so there must be something else at play. And I guess I'm wondering if there is something else at play, is there requirement to the number of cars that can be parked in a front yard in this neighborhood? And if we are basically building out a circle driveway here, is it really actually going to be more of a parkway versus a driveway here? I mean, is it probably likely just going to be holding a lot more cars in front? Because there is already a garage, there is a lot of driveway. I'm, I'm curious what the intent of the driveway is in versus the ordinance of what we're looking to avoid.
Well, yeah, I mean, the intent of how it gets used, we'll have to ask the applicant, but the, I mean, there's a couple of different things. There is the stormwater runoff and having, you know, and I think that's important, but it's also a character perspective of not having, you know, having some limitations on how much pavement you can do in the front yard. And even our old zoning code had that 25% limit. So it's, it's a longstanding standard in Des Moines that, you know, we're, we, you know, you don't want your, we don't want folks to have their entire front yard paved. So I think it's, it's a little bit of an urban design. So I think it's a little bit of an urban design and impact on the character of the neighborhood, and then that impacts your neighbors. So it's not just, you know, it's also thinking about your neighbors from that. And then also stormwater management just across the city and having green area that water can absorb into.
I have a question for Shiroshi. There appears to be a curb cut there for that southern side of the property. Has that always been there, or was that added as part of their current gravel?
There is an existing, it's a gravel driveway, but it's being used as a gravel driveway essentially. And the applicant applied for a driveway permit for that particular curb cut to the south.
If I could, I have just a little information to add because I had talked to Kyle, one of our other staffers about this. I apologize. There is no, that was added within the last, you know, that curb has been cut down in the last few years. They're now trying to, you know, to actually put pavement there. That's where they've come in to get the permit to actually do it. If you go back to Google Street View, I don't know how long the applicant has owned the place, but there's been some modifications and that driveway was, at least from what I saw in the Google Street View, has been added in the last few years. Does that help answer the question, clarify the history of the two curb cuts? The one in front of the garage, I think, has been there for some time.
All right, thanks, Shiroshi. Is the applicant present? Please come forward. You have 10 minutes. State your name, address, and sign in when you're done.
Good evening. Johnny Palmer, 4125 East 30th Street. It's a new experience for me, so I hope we can all enjoy this together. I've already enjoyed the first part. That was thrilling about the ice cream stuff. Well, yes, let me answer some of these questions. I've lived here since 2015 when I bought the house. It was basically a dilapidated rundown. Previous occupant died in this home. I have, the oldest picture is actually one I've actually made progress on, so it doesn't really demonstrate all the changes. And I wish you could see that. So from this, I mean, I've already spent two years working on it. Originally, the grading was so high in the front yard, it actually almost was like a dirt curb. It had bushes all the way. I actually found where he was watering those and the hose, permeable hose or whatever he was using was six inches deep. So I had to get all that cleared out just so it wouldn't keep pushing water back. I was having foundation issues. There was one side, it was pushed in, the crack was that big. I've done quite a bit of work to get this thing back to its condition. As you can see from one of the current photos, I've completely re-sited this, re-roofed this. The garage, I pushed back. It was previously where that truck is. And as I've been doing this, I've waited on the driveway. When we were using the skid loader, I think that's where some of the damage came to that area, but that also inspired a driveway. Part of the reason I want that there is because I have a truck and trailer. I'm a finished carpenter, so I regularly am moving this truck and trailer, whether I'm coming home from work or leaving in the morning. I park it sometimes behind the basketball hoop. You can't see it, but it's on the side over by the truck. And I chose that size, the 18 feet coming out, because it gives me plenty of room with a truck and trailer. I understand staff has proposed 10 feet. I think that's just a little too narrow. I understand the concerns about water. I watch the water regularly because in my patio area, this patio area here between the house and the garage is all concrete. And that it allows, I've got drainage running out, tiling all the way out into the backyard to disperse that. So I've done everything I can to get that water to go back into the big yard. That's one of the problems with this Douglas area and one of the wonderful things about it. You can see I've got tons of room in the back, but all these houses, most of them, are pushed so far forward, especially mine, I don't have much room. We're not big car people. It's not like it's going to become a parking lot. But when we do want to park or when guests come over, my side, the east side, is a no parking zone. Right in front of me is three mailboxes. Now, we can park there. Most of the time, the mailman's not there, but under circumstances, at times, we cross paths, and I don't want to make it any more inconvenient for him. Plus, the benefit of us being able to get in and out easily is something we look forward to. I proposed, I think it was Kyle, just in our email correspondence, that I would come down to, instead of 18 feet, I even said 12 and a half feet, which would give me enough room, I believe, for a truck and trailer to get through there and around the half circle with a little to, well, little problem, I guess. But other than that, that's kind of what I'm looking for.
Questions?
Is the truck and trailer used for turning it around to back it into the driveway, or is it to actually pull in and park the truck and trailer there?
I don't really intend to leave it there in the front yard. I have a security camera system, so I actually like to when I'm not using it. Most, I'd say 70% of the time, it's on a job site. I commonly work in West Des Moines on houses that will be there for sometimes six months, sometimes three months. Sometimes I'm just doing daily jobs. But as it comes and goes, the trailer might be parked behind the basketball court, or not court, but behind the basketball hoop. Sometimes it's actually in the driveway, right in front of the truck. I use my garage sometimes as a shop. But it's more that I can have that ease to get in there. It means I'm not backing up, doing three-point turns on the street. I've noticed since I've lived there, we have a few of those people that like to get off 29th and race down 30th. So I try to be quick about it. I've, you know, I have wonderful neighbors. There's only one or two that I find have less respect for the law when it comes to speeding, which, I'll be honest, I have a trouble with when I'm on the highway, but we're working on that. My point is, I think it would be easier, just all said and done, for me to just make it easy. Also, my wife, I enjoy being able to have her car so she can park right up there next to the gate. I think there's a picture we showed earlier where she parks right up there in the front, which I have this one that kind of was, you know, a quick sketch, you know, phone thing just to kind of show that. But she will park there. She also likes parking under the shade of the tree, behind the basketball court, you know, to keep her car cool. But it's all pretty standard, you know, trying to be efficient and effective for what we have in this neighborhood. And since my house is so far forward, I am limited on options, and I don't, you know, I don't want my truck and trailer to become a hazard.
So it sounds like you would agree to anything above the 12 and a half?
Anything above? Like, I go bigger?
Or anything between 18 and 12 and a half?
Well, I think 18 might be a big extreme, seeing on the picture I drew. I mean, you saw my wonderful art. I measured it out, but I measured it out for plenty of room. I still want to put a tree there, you know, in that center section, you know. I still want to put a tree there eventually, you know, once we get this finished up. I'm pretty close. I mean, this house is almost done. You can probably see from my permits, I'm finishing up the kitchen and bathroom. And so in the next, hopefully, three months, I'll be 100% done with this house, and then we can sit back and enjoy the fruits of our labor and, you know, not have that evening, night, weekend work going on. So, yeah, I think if we, I mean, I proposed 12 and a half because 10 seems a little small. I do a lot of houses that, you know, as they do their driveways, oh, man, I don't know how many times I've heard of them running off their little thin driveway and tearing up their grass, killing sprinkler heads. You know, I think even from a professional view, I think 10 is just a little small, but I understand our percentage issue. So I think if we can just get a little more, like 12 and a half, 13 sounds great, but, you know, I also will accept, you know, what's best.
I'm just curious because with some of these, like the step two is always, okay, we got this thing in here, we intended to do it one way, and now we're using it differently. I know that we've had instances have come forward where we've had enforcement actions on essentially work trailers in front of a house. Is that something that staff has identified as a potential problem here, knowing that the use is for parking a work trailer even if it's from time to time? I don't want us to approve something that all of a sudden we're like, oh, man, well, now you can't do what you want to do, like.
Yeah, I think our perspective is we recognize in this particular house type and zoning and given his lot size, the code does anticipate a circle drive. So that's why, you know, we're supportive of some level of impervious area relief because, okay, he's got a large lot. So and the code says, yeah, you can have a circle drive. Well, in this case, to do a circle drive, we think it needs to be a little smaller, but he still has to have some sort of relief. So that's why we're supportive of relief. We didn't, because, I mean, that was really our thinking. We didn't really get into the, well, how's he going to use it, you know? We don't have a history of enforcement here. We've had some other cases where there has been a history where we know we have somebody that's been parking equipment, you know, trailers with equipment on it, maybe on grass, you know, some things that our enforcement staff, not planning staff, but enforcement staff have been having issues with. And in that case, you know, we have kind of brought that into the discussion that, and in those cases, they also weren't zoned and a large lot that allows the circle driveway like he is. So that, that's probably a long-winded way of saying, not in this case.
All right, so making sure they'll summarize, so what we're saying right now is if we allow a circle drive, we currently have, we can allow a circle drive, awesome. We allow a circle drive within parameters. We're looking to expand those parameters. But, you know, if all of a sudden enforcement comes down in a few months and says, hey, he can't have his work truck in front, will they be right? Or is his work truck being here allowed?
I don't think it would be a matter of the work truck. I mean, it'd be if you had a skid loader sitting on a trailer kind of thing.
Let me address that right away. I don't like to see that in my, even behind my basketball hoop. You know, most of the time, it is at the job site. I do have a big yard in the back, and I have a trailer back there, you know, for when I need a flatbed. I don't want to see it anymore than I have to. I like, you know, when I come up, I like a nice clean, as you can see from, you know, I have a nice metal gate. You know, I enjoy just, you know, a clean look. So I don't, in no way in the future, and I could sell this house, and the next guy is like, "Skid loader, let's put it there." I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I wasn't arguing that. I was more making sure that we're conscious of step two. If we do step one, say, hey, this is here, let's make sure we're all on the same table. It doesn't become like a used car lot or anything. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page there. So before we get you frustrated with us, and you said this is all right.
Well, thank you. You did a wonderful job for your first time here. So, thanks. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Anyone in opposition?
Carol Maher, Ward 3, Code 50312. At some point, we should think of less concrete rather than more. We should also maybe recommend to the applicant about the programs that the city funds at 50%, being rain gardens and rain barrels, that would help address the issue he's having with all the water coming down onto his patio and going to his house. And that circle is a perfect place for a rain garden because you're going to have nothing but water coming through there. That's not going to be rinsed through roots before it gets to the storm gutter. So I know you can't require someone to put in a rain garden that gets reimbursed at 50%, but it would sure do go a long way to help mitigating all the new concrete that's going to go in his front yard. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition or neutral? All right, seeing none, you do have five minutes for rebuttal if you feel like you need it.
I'd like to say, tell me more about the rain guard. I'm curious. And I don't really have that rain problem. I prevented that going forward with the future. That's, I maybe didn't explain it well, but the tiling and everything takes care of that where I, you know, that was planned ahead of time before I did that. And, yeah, and then I graded everything else away from the house. So I'm looking pretty good on that.
Great, thank you.
Answer to your question, just Google.
Yeah, just.
Des Moines Storm Water Management. And there's some contractors you can hit up. I'm one of them.
All right, does anyone have any further questions before I close the public hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing. And what do we think?
Would staff have major conniptions if this was approved at 12 foot as opposed to 10?
No, I think we have some very strong reservations about what was proposed, but if the commission wants to do 12 feet or wherever you land, I mean, I think that's, percentage-wise, it's still fairly high, but just like the physical dimension, like just thinking 10 to 12 is not a whole lot difference. And I do recognize that, you know, make the curve more achievable. So I think, you know, staff is not going to lose any sleep over that.
I'd be supportive of that.
Yeah, then I would like to move staff with the only modification being to allow 12 feet versus 10 feet wide.
All right, there's a motion on the floor from Chris. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Looks like that's everyone.
Yep, motion carries 10-0.
Thank you. And number seven is our last item tonight. It is a request from 600 East 14th Street LLC, represented by Jake Christensen, for review and approval of public hearing site plan. Casey's at 600 East 14th for property at 600 East 14th for type two design alternatives A through F. And Nick will be presenting.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpe, Planning Staff. Just kind of want to break down some of the design alternatives that we're looking at tonight. Probably read your staff report. There's a long list, so I kind of want to try to break that down of how we're going to go through the presentation. So the first five, or the first four on there, A through D, have more so to do with the building design. So some of those kind of nitty-gritty architectural elements, we can talk about that a little bit, should be a really nuanced discussion. I'm going to try to walk you guys through how, as staff, we worked through that with some of the site constraints and worked with the applicant. So I'll try to explain that. It should be good for some Q and A. We should have a good discussion about that. Parts E and F relate more to the site, so they're a little bit different. Those are a little bit more clear-cut, and you'll see that if you read the staff report and also in the discussion, you'll see it's a little more of a clear-cut type of recommendation. So here's an aerial of the site. It's highlighted here in yellow. As you can see, it's bounded by 235 to the north. We got East 14th, US 69 to the east. We got Des Moines Street to the south and some institutional uses to the west. I also wanted to include a little bit of more of a zoomed-out aerial to give you a little bit greater context here. If you're following my cursor, the cursor represents, pretty roughly, I did a rough measurement, it's about a half mile in terms of radius, so if we're thinking about things like walksheds, keep that in mind as we're talking about this item tonight. Also want to point out a couple of landmarks. So this here, this is East High, so it's located about a quarter mile north. They do have to cross 235, so it's not necessarily a friendly walk, but it is relatively close to the proposed site. Down here, the state Capitol, and then we have the accompanying Capitol complex right here. And then over here, we have the East Grand Commercial Corridor, has the QuickTrip and a lot of businesses that people frequent. So we can dig into some of those elements and how they might play into the site that we're looking at tonight. So digging into the site plan here, a couple of different views. I'll stop on this one. So another thing that I did want to mention, too, if this site looks familiar, maybe you've seen it before, this actually was in front of the commission back in January. It was rezoned, so initially, or before this project kicked off, it was zoned P2, so really for public civic institutional-type uses, kind of incongruence. public civic institutional type uses, kind of incongruence with the surrounding Capitol complex. Uh, the property was rezoned to MX3, so like a heavier mixed-use, uh, commercial district with the intent to eventually construct a fuel station, which is what you're seeing tonight. So that was the zoning history back in January. Now, fast forward, we're at the site plan stage and they're trying to actually develop it and build this out. So I know we talked a lot about the storefront, uh, building regulations earlier tonight. Um, this, this building also takes on the storefront form and a little bit of a different zoning district, so it's MX3 versus an MX1, so a little bit more of a heavier commercial. Uh, a lot of the same intent of the storefront building still applies, so really trying to get it sited close to the corner, close to both of the frontages here, trying to orient the parking, uh, towards the rear, um, having a lot of primary, uh, frontage coverage, so really, um, in this case, the Des Moines Street is considered a primary frontage. And so really, uh, trying to have the building cover a large expanse of that to really create a hardened pedestrian edge, a true urban edge, especially in an area, if you walk through there, it, it doesn't really have that right now. And so, um, really with the relatively thin site, um, and with the use that's proposed as a fuel station, there was really a lot of nuance that had to be had in discussions that staff had with the applicant. There was some design decisions that really had to be made. We really had to sit down with the applicant and decide, okay, is what is proposed meeting the intent of the zoning ordinance? And generally, because of all the things that I just described, uh, staff generally does feel that it does, you know, we're citing the building close to the corner, um, we've got a decent amount of, it meets the primary frontage coverage requirement, we've got parking, uh, located in the, behind the building, uh, generally, you know, before it was actually stretched, uh, more to front, uh, East 14th Street, the applicant has adjusted that, trying to reduce the impervious, uh, surface area as much as possible. Um, so generally, uh, staff felt like that, you know, hey, we, they've worked with us a little bit, we've tried to get a building that we want and, and a site that contextually is kind of hard to develop, to try to develop something super walkable. With all that being said, um, there were some elements, particularly around the building's facade, that did not conform to some of the provisions in the planning and design ordinance. So I'm going to flash forward here to some of the elevations, see if I can zoom in, see that a little bit easier. So, um, what you're looking at right now, so these, this is the proposed building design. This is the south facade of the building, so this is the facade that would be facing Des Moines Street. Um, on the surface, looks pretty good, it's got a lot of glazing, materials are good, it's got an entrance. Um, the big thing that, that staff noted though, was that most of the glass are almost exclusively all of the glass, um, on the south as well as the east facade of the building. So if you're thinking about how the building squares the corner there, the ones that face the street, they utilize spandrel glass. Per the designed ordinance, in terms of, uh, having ground story transparency that faces the street, transparency is designed as glass that has a reflectance factor of no more than .25 and transmittance factor of greater than 50%. So really, kind of in layman's terms, what that means is really we want vision glass where the occupants inside of the building are really able to interact with the, the street realm and everybody that's walking in the street can see inside of the building. It's kind of promote a, a walkable pedestrian oriented environment that's not really supposed to mimic a blank wall. There was really some operational constraints, um, per the Casey's team and, and as staff, we really went back and forth on this and we discussed it, that, um, really, didn't really make it make sense to, uh, have a lot of vision glass on the south and the, uh, eastern facades of the building. And really, that's because of, uh, the floor plan and just really the operational constraints and the realities of, of building a fuel station, um, as well as a retail sales, uh, food service type establishment. So what you're looking at right here, um, is a prospective floor plan of what they're proposing. So if you're following my cursor, this side here, this is the side that faces to the north towards the fuel pumps. Um, and staff, as we were looking at this, um, while we, we did, uh, push them to really cite the building close to both street frontages and to the corner, um, to try to promote a pedestrian oriented environment, we also acknowledge at the same time, we're located less than a quarter mile south of 235. As, as much as we love promoting walkable type environments, there are realities that we're on East 14th Street, there's three lanes of southbound traffic, um, there's fuel pumps here, so it is really going to be an auto oriented type use. And so we understand that just because of the way that the building is, it's got two frontages, it's got to have two public entrances, that the applicant really had to place the back of the building, um, towards the Des Moines Street facade and had to really put the quote unquote "front" of the building, so where you would have your checkout, where you'd be buying your goods, where you'd be picking up your pizza, those types of things, that would be facing towards the fuel pumps on the north side. And that's where, um, a lot of that vision glass was proposed. That, I do want to also note, uh, you do see the entrance here that is, um, facing the Des Moines Street facade, uh, that is a public entrance. So, uh, the applicant, you know, did comply with that, that was something early on that was kind of a gray area and through discussions with the applicant, they were, um, okay with allowing this as a public entrance. Um, the, the main entrance to the building however, is, is really on the north side facing those fuel pumps like I talked about earlier. So to summarize all that, I know I was ramming a little bit, there was really just some design decisions that had to be made, you know, how are we really meeting the intent of the ordinance? Um, there's going to have to be some sacrifices, a little bit of give and take to try to get what we want, to improve the pedestrian nature and, and the walkability of the area, but while also acknowledging because of the use, uh, because of the context, there are some legitimate site realities at play here. With all that being said too, um, I think staff was, was generally supportive of the idea of using spandrel glass on both the street facing facades, even if it didn't meet our quote unquote transparency requirements. We thought that would be better than, um, having vision glass on those street facing facades that just showcased a bunch of coolers and mechanical equipment that wasn't really something that we wanted to promote, um, on the sidewalk. Uh, but, and at the same time, we also didn't want to just have a long blank brick wall. And so we really had to make a compromise, we thought spandrel grass, glass was appropriate in that sense. So that's the basis for that part of the staff recommendation. The one thing that I did want to get into though, that, that staff is asking of the applicant and that really is sort of tasked with the, to the commission tonight to discuss and, and lead us down that path, is the entrance here. And I, we went back, applicant and myself and our team, we went back and forth with this. Um, because of the utilization of spandrel glass on most of the facade, um, we would want to see, um, a little bit more of a pronunciation with this entrance here. Um, we understand that it is a public entrance, it is going to be open during store hours, um, but we would like to see some more features that would elevate it as a public entrance. If you're working at the state Capitol complex, or if you are, um, living in the neighborhood on the other side of East 14th, you're, maybe you're walking down from East High School, um, we want this to be pronounced and, and say, hey, you can come in me right now. Um, this, while it is a public entrance, uh, staff doesn't feel that, um, in terms of the principal entryway requirements, um, in terms of some of the architectural elements that could be included, that, that was really taken strongly enough. And so that's one of the main tasks of the commission tonight, um, is to decide if that, if staff's position is appropriate on that. So in the staff recommendation in the report, uh, you'll notice that staff has, hasn't really issued a super firm recommendation with that, but we've, we've said there's a, a variety of elements that you can include, like a double door, or maybe adding a canopy, or maybe some, some lights, or some other architectural features that would really delineate that as, hey, this is a primary public entrance, it's not just the back of the building, even though functionally it, it actually is. So kind of moving into part two of the staff recommendation here, or the staff report, um, the other couple of design alternatives refer the utilization of rock, um, as a ground cover material, as well as the trash enclosure gates, so a little bit more of a, a site plan item in terms of the site design elements. Um, getting into, and I'm going to scroll on the staff report here, sorry about that. So just digging into the staff recommendation, um, I tried to run through some of that workflow and some of the nuance that, uh, staff was, was trying to reach with the applicant. The other two items, one being the rock and two being the trash enclosure gates, regarding the rock, um, per our landscaping ordinance, just generally, a rock is not a permitted ground cover material, so, um, per chapter 135, article 7, section 3, generally, um, all sites should be covered with either grass, hardscape, um, or like an organic cover, like a, like a wood chip mulch or something like that. So rock, just in general, is not allowed to be used as a general ground cover or in planting beds. And there's really like four main reasons for that. The first one would be, uh, a drainage mechanism, so talking to our engineering department, really rock does not have the same, um, basically the same qualities as like soil, um, or grass or vegetation. Um, and flooding is a pretty sensitive thing in Des Moines, so in terms of stormwater management, uh, staff doesn't really feel it's appropriate to be approving, um, rock to be developed on new, new construction sites, like the one that you're seeing today. So that was the first and foremost issue. Uh, second one would be impacts on trees and landscaping, so, uh, rock really does not promote a hospitable environment for tree root growth, um, as well as other types of landscaping. It's not going to last as long, it's more likely to die, especially, we haven't had a lot of rain this summer, so you can imagine what a new tree would, would be doing in a bed of, of recently placed rock. Third, um, more of a traffic perspective, it's actually thought of as a safety concern, especially if it's in the right of way or even near the right of way, it can trickle out of there. Um, if you guys have been maybe in some other sites around the city, there's some planter beds that do have rock, those were kind of legacy planter beds that may have been approved before the adoption of the, the new zoning code in 2019. But rock, it, it skips out of there all the time, it gets on the sidewalk, it gets on the streets, it's a tripping hazard, it's a hazard for motorcyclists and bicyclists. Um, and so we, as, as staff, our position, you know, a planning staff as well as traffic and transportation staff, we don't feel that that's appropriate, um, in a multimodal type environment. And then lastly also, um, and this is more of an anecdotal piece, but our traffic staff has noted that rocks are oftentimes used maybe as projectiles, people pick them up and throw them, um, and it's, that's not really something that we want to promote, especially with a, a new construction type development. Getting into the other side item with the trash enclosure, um, this one's pretty simple. So, uh, with, in the city of Des Moines, for new trash enclosures, you're required to utilize 18 gauge metal gates, which is really just a more durable metal. That's really what it comes down to, the applicant is proposing a 24 gauge metal. Um, this is really not, um, an aesthetic item. I, I know a lot of times some of these, uh, design alternatives might seem really subjective or, uh, aesthetic. The main concern here with staff is, it's really a durability piece. Anecdotally, talking to zoning enforcement staff, they have problems all the time with trash enclosure gates. I, I think with the enclosure that they're, uh, proposing in terms of the wall, they got masonry, it's going to be nice, that, there's not really a question of the durability with that, but it's the gates, um, they get bumped into a lot. Uh, as you know, in Iowa, we have a lot of different weather conditions, extreme temperatures, snow, things like that. Um, and this, this site is going to have heavy use of a trash enclosure. It's a fuel station, it's probably going to be pretty busy, it's a high traffic corridor, they're also selling food, so there's going to be people going in and out of there all the time. And so with that heavy use, um, staff really, really notes that, hey, we should be using the, the code compliant 18 gauge metal. And just historically as well, um, staff, uh, you know, sometimes as you guys know, we, we have the type one design alternative process, whereas staff can consider some elements, um, at an administrative level. Uh, trash enclosures fall into the landscaping section of city code, so everything in there is really at least initially considered as a type one design alternative. With pre-existing sites, a lot of times staff were, were sensitive to that, you know, we understand, hey, you know, maybe you're just making some changes to the building, doing some site improvements, okay, we can kind of compromise and be a little bit flexible on, on what trash enclosure you're proposing. But with this as a new construction site, um, staff feels that we should fully implement the provisions of the zoning code, and that would be an 18 gauge panel over the 24 gauge. So just to summarize, um, parts A through D, so those were the, the building elements that we talked about earlier relating to the transparency, some of the occupied space requirements, as well as some of the entryway requirements. Staff recommending, recommends approval of the site plan and those design alternative requests, subject to a revised submittal coming in from the applicant that would demonstrate some of those alternative or additional architectural items that they could utilize with that, uh, entrance that's facing Des Moines Street. Uh, but then switching gears into the site stuff, uh, regarding the provision of the rock as well as the trash enclosure gates, uh, we're recommending denial of those items. So I can take any questions.
I apologize, I, I do have one concern. I understand that we may not always be on the same page here, but the, the rock one bothers me aggressively because the last time that we actually brought this up, the projectile piece, is brought up without evidence, is also brought up as being the source of BLM breaking windows with a 20,000 foot pound brake limit, which is non-factual, nonsensical, which makes me wonder if we're actually proposing something here as fact that it's just not real. That part seems bothersome to me. If they kill trees, fine, if we don't like, like them because we don't like the look, fine, even though we have them a bunch of places, but I really hope we can end that projectile discussion because it seems like it was grounded in like social bias than it was in fact. Because that was really problematic at the time and it seems crazy to say it again.
Okay, that was in discussions, anecdotal discussions with the traffic and transportation staff. I know what the item that was talked about.
Anecdotal is not fact, right?
Yeah, and so I under, I understand that, and I, I wanted to clarify that when I was presenting it. I wasn't trying to say.
I, I don't think it's the basis of our recommendation. So I, I would just park that to the side. The basis of our recommendation is our design standards don't allow it. Um, there's re, other reasons that have been mentioned as to why, and I, that's our recommendation.
Are there other questions?
So I guess you still want to keep the site walkable, correct? Um, what, what was your concerns on that south side when it came to glass and, uh, door access? Can you?
Yeah, sure. So let me go back to the elevations here.
Nick, while you're scrolling back, I'll go ahead and chime in a little bit on what we were thinking. What we're looking for, we recognize that, that facade, uh, is a lot of back of house operations, so there's not, and, there, there's not going to be, um, from our perspective, it's reasonable not to have as much glass as our code would normally require for a storefront building. However, we think there needs to be more emphasis on that entrance and primarily what our thoughts were, were either, um, like a, a double door, uh, this door with maybe two windows on either side, transom window above it, um, would help as well, especially, you know, bringing it up to the height of the spandrel glass, so it just doesn't feel so, um, backside of a, you know, secondary of an entrance. Those were our thoughts.
So would it compare, will be like Cedar Rapids, for example, has a Casey's that serves as a double site, so you're basically just saying, hey, if you put in doubles, set it, double doors on the site, since that is the primary road, we're happy? Is that the gist?
Yeah, I, I think it might help to have like a transom above it just to give it more presence. I mean, when you look at this door, how short it, it is compared to the, the faux windows. But, and I, and I think those solutions would have minimal impact on the interior layout, layout, it might impact a little bit of the storage rooms, um, and, and I know there's a cooler to the right of that door, but, I mean, we'll let the, that's why we wrote the staff recommendation open-ended, so we could continue to have dialogue. We, we didn't want to come here today and say, you've got to absolutely do this, these are what we're saying, so here are a couple ideas, work with us on it, and we'll get it figured out.
So we're looking to at least put an awning above that door and then maybe two?
I, I don't know about an awning, I think that was just, uh, I, I think really what we're looking for is mostly glass. I, I think, um, on, you know, that, certainly if the applicant had a sense of how they would do that, I, I wouldn't want it to just necessarily be the door, kind of have to encompass the whole thing, so that, I don't know that they'll want to do that. But to me, really what's important is the, the del, you know, the additional glass to give that a stronger presence, so when I'm walking by or driving by, I really feel like I can go in and out that entrance. You know, when it's like this, I, I don't know, it feels, it just doesn't, um, I don't think it's going to naturally draw people.
All right, so I have one more question. This is the current proposal. Staff would like to see that the windows were see-through, is that correct as well? So is that like a more?
Yeah, the, the additional around the door, so the door, you can see that says vision, so we're just, we're just saying in that area of the door, in a very limited area, do clear glass or, you know, vision glass, leave this, you know, it, it would impact, depending on how you treat that, it's going to impact the other rib, you know, those ribbons of spandrel to the either direction, but for largely, large part, those would all stay intact.
So those centralized windows, those five windows essentially be see-through, maybe remove one window and put a second?
Actually, go to the floor, go to the floor plan if you would, Nick, sorry.
And the only reason why I'm pressing on this, I, I went to East High School, that place is very, very, very high traffic, it, traffic during lunch hour, so you'll have people walking and visiting, and definitely from the south end, there's a bunch of apartments as well. Uh, they currently frequent QuickTrip, but I can see them spending their dollars there at Casey's. So I guess my real concern is, I, I want it to make sure it's safe for high school kids to be able to get that, access that space and those people from the apartments. That's my only gripe. So that's why I'm trying to dig down and figure out what, what this is going to look like.
Sure, and if you could zoom in to that, kind of the front door, uh, not, excuse me, the back door area along the street, just so, just a little bit more, slide it over, there, there we go. You can kind of see where you have the rhythm of the three spandrel windows to your left and the ribbon of the two to the right. To do what staff is asking for, you know, that area that says hallway, you know, that, some of that is going to have to get, it would be, that had to be kind of widened out, those, you might lose one, uh, two of the spandrel pieces, but in that area, that central area to immediately around the door, whether it's a double door, it's a single door with area to immediately around the door, whether it's a double door, it's a single door with the side lights and the transom, you're just getting a little more glass in that middle, does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Nick, very well done. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Please state your name, address, you have 10 minutes, and sign in when you're done.
My name's Daniel Wilrick, I'm with Pels Design Services at 2323 Dixon Street, and we're working with Casey's to get this project done. Staff has been really good to work with to get to this point, we're glad that we were able to have a discussion around the spandrel glass, because, I mean, clearly we could put in clear glass, but you'd see a side of a cooler, so that's, you know, probably not ideal either, right? So one of the ways that we do the spandrel glass to help, I don't know how familiar you guys are with it, but a traditional spandrel glass is one pane of glass painted on the back, and it doesn't even look like glass. The way we do it is we use a one inch insulated glass, paint the very back surface so that it has a closer look to what clear glass would during the day when you're getting that reflection from the sunlight and things. So I think from a, you know, unless you're right up on it or at night, it'll generally give you that feel of a glass window like you would see on the front of the building. In terms of precedent, we did something very similar on the Forest Avenue non-fuel site a year or two ago, I can't remember how long ago that was, but we had the same discussion, came to the same conclusion in a couple of locations on that site, so I think, you know, we're good with the compromise of the spandrel glass. I think when it comes to the rear entrance, we do have a few more limitations, just because obviously Casey's has a plan that they use that works for their operation, they spend a lot of time developing that, changing it becomes very problematic. I know we're talking about minor changes, but the reality is too, the way Casey's buys their projects is they buy them ahead, so, you know, theoretically, I don't know specifically for this project, but theoretically, 75% of that building could be sitting in their warehouse already, just waiting for the go to bring it out, or on their, in their vendor's yard. So that's why typically when we talk about these Casey's projects, we want to work with the city, but we also want to try to stay as true to the sort of standard as we can for those reasons. One thing I do want to show, let's see, I'm going to scroll back to, so that's the north side, where's my south, can I get my south elevation? Because I just want to show what the standard south elevation looks like before we do anything to it, and when we talk about how Casey's has accommodated this idea about an entrance on the south side of the building, you can see, you know, in this case, there's, I have to wait for Nick to stop moving before I can move. You know, we've basically recreated the other side of the building, just slightly smaller, you know, with the stone columns on either side, the big Casey's logo, this portion of it does project out from the face of the building a foot or two, not quite as far as the other side, just because of our location relative to the property line. So we've done all those things to bring up the quality of the entrance of this side, and I just want to show you, if I can get the, I guess in school they called them Elmos, yeah. Had we not, had we built the prototype as is, this is kind of, and this one isn't cool and colored, but this is what the back would look like. Right, you can see, it's very, it's a big brick wall, it's got all our electrical utilities, it's got the minimal door with the kind of, you know, minimal canopy and a little signage. So I think when we talk about, has Casey's gone to the effort to improve the look of that side of the building, to go from that to what we have here, we've certainly gone a long ways to do that. Not that saying asking for more isn't something that you do, I think, I just think we're hesitant to make any more changes to that side that would affect the layout even minimally, because again, with the way they buy their stores, that cooler is a set size, that back room on the other side is already very tight, you know, we might start getting into some accessibility issues if we tighten things up anymore. The, there is a little bit of room in that hallway, but we've got a little shaft, a little shaft in that one corner that's housing some utilities for the cooler condensers and things, so it's not so easy to just sort of take over that hallway space. I think, you know, maybe putting a little transom window over the top of the door so that it kind of mimics what's on the north side, because there are transoms over that is pretty minimal, it's something that could be done, but I think if you look at where we were to where we are and add that little transom, I think Casey's has come a long ways to accommodating that. To the point that Justin made about the kids coming over from east, I was a kid once, I wasn't, I wouldn't walk all the way around to Des Moines Street, I'd cut across the fuel lot and rock in that north door, right? So that's where I'm coming in as a kid coming from east. This is really serving the folks that might walk over from the Capitol Building, or parts to the south, right? So, so really, I guess that's where I would be at with the architectural elements, I mean, really, I think we're in agreement with what staff said, and I think our offering to the request of a little more work back there would be that transom above the door versus a double door or some side lights, which, yeah. In terms of the site items, the rock in the planning bed, as we were putting that together, we looked across the street at the McDonald's, which I think was, from what my site guy told me today, was done after the new site planning, at least was built, after the new site zoning ordinances were in place, maybe it was approved before, but it was certainly built after, and they have rock in their planning bed with some ornamental grasses, and we're talking about rock in a planning bed with some hedges to form that sort of visual, a little bit of a visual barrier. So I think, you know, we'd like to keep the rock, you know, forced to do something different, I'm told that brick chips would be a reasonable alternative from our standpoint, I think anything else, mulch or whatever, just becomes very maintenance heavy, so. And then in terms of the steel gate, I mean, we're just, we're proposing what we've done in other locations for steel gates, the thickness of the material, I mean, I get that desire for something more durable, but we're talking about Casey's here who takes care of their properties, because they understand that deferred maintenance doesn't pay, so even if it is a little bit thinner gauge material, they're going to take care of it. I guess I'm speaking for Casey's, that's what I would, that's what I've seen from them. I know Nick Day sent Nick Tarpe some images of some other, another location in Des Moines, which is the typical.
Can you flip back to the computer, Glory? It should be on these.
Yeah, there we go. I mean, it's visually, it's not going to change anything, I think it's just, again, it's that component of Casey's buys these buildings over and over and out ahead, so that when it's time to go, they can go, because the faster they get it open, the faster they can start serving the community and start generating revenue. So, you know, we'd certainly like to keep it as what we typically do for that reason, Casey's is going to take care of their properties, they typically do, so I guess we'd ask you to kind of waive the recommendation on the steel gate. So, did I hit everything, Eric? Any questions?
Yes, what are the pedestrians that are walking's access points, can you show that on a map? So if they were coming from the north and the south, how would that look? So essentially if they're, yeah, if they're coming from East High School, how are they going to, what's the quickest way to you, and is it safe?
I would speculate, I know if I was a high school kid who's trying to get to lunch as quick as I can, I would probably come across on this sidewalk and cut, potentially cut right through here to this front door.
But could you describe the preferred way?
Even if, even if they stayed on the sidewalk, there is a stair here leading to the sidewalk, right? So that's, that's the.
That was my question.
That's the, you're right, that's the path that we're providing for them, whether that's the path they take.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, I just was, I wanted to see if there was a cutout.
And then, yeah, if you go to the, if we go to the south, I mean, they're coming up the side, people are coming up the sidewalk to the sidewalk probably on Des Moines Street and in this door that we've been talking about.
Okay. And then my last question was, what were you proposing on that, that south side? Were you looking to expand that door to make more vision space, or you just want to keep the single door and the?
I mean, from an operational standpoint, based on the plan of the building, we don't have a lot of room to make it much wider, I mean, the best we could do is a four foot door instead of a three and a half foot door, it's already a wider door than a typical door, I mean, it is a three and a half foot door. What I was suggesting is we could put this, what they call a transom window, the smaller window, above the door, and that could be clear. To bring it up, I guess, you know, architecturally on that side of the building, that would put the top of that door at the same level as the top of those windows, the spandrel glass windows that we're proposing, so, you know, aesthetically, that would make sense regardless, so. But that little shaft in the corner, you know, there is some utilities, or some, I say utilities, but there are some things in there that service that cooler, so that's not just there to take up some space, it's actually hiding that so that it doesn't become damaged, you know, folks walk through that space. So we don't have a ton, I mean, you're not going to get a double door in there, you're barely going to get a double door in there, I would guess, even if you didn't have that shaft. Like I said, a slightly wider door maybe, but that door is already six inches wider than a typical door, so, and that's, that is a typical, Casey's detail on their rear door stores is that door to be a little bit wider.
Is there a significant difference, different business model for this Casey's versus one on 8th Street in Cedar Rapids, which does have two double sided doors and really does have two entries, which is what you sort of have here, you have pedestrian side and fuel side, they have a similar situation, is there something significantly different that means that Casey's wouldn't be able to accommodate that for some reason?
Well, yeah, I mean, Casey's does have a few different models of store that they put out there, and, you know, they do their market research to understand potential traffic, customer traffic, revenue, size of site makes a difference, you know, this site, that building I would, I don't know exactly which building you're talking about, but I would guess it's a little bit bigger building than this one is, which then does allow for a wider rear door. If you look at their truck stop model, yeah, they've got double doors on both sides, but we're talking huge sites.
No, it's 8th Street, it's at the top end of Newbo Cove, so it's, or Newbo District, so it is probably almost the exact same width on this thing, I would assume.
Yeah, I guess I didn't, I wasn't part of that project, so I'm not sure, but I know that they do, they do look at different sites in different ways and have different models they'll put on them, and this is the one that fits this site from their perspective. And so that's the, that's the single door, rear door in this case.
Do you have any other sites that you're not using rock for ground cover?
That we're not using rock? You know, yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, I'm not familiar with every single site, I would guess there are sites that don't have anything, sites that use something other than rock. I think from our standpoint, rock is just, is an easier from a maintenance standpoint, that would be the preference.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. I don't think there's anyone in the audience, you're not speaking, right? Okay. So unless there's questions for staff. Are there any questions? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Have we ever, so we're requiring 24 gauge, has that ever been approved, or have we ever required them to do it and they've completed it?
Jason can butt in, I think we have approved 24 gauge gates, but that's typically been like at a pre-existing site, where like maybe they have an existing building, they're doing some site improvements, they're upgrading their trash enclosure, I think we have allowed that in the past. But the historic position of staff, if you're doing a new build like this, you should comply with Article 7, which would require 18 gauge.
So can I go on 31st is 18 versus 24?
That was also approved before the most recent zoning ordinance, had a different.
I think, yeah, it's hard to, I don't, I don't, we couldn't say for sure, but it was under the old zoning ordinance. I believe the gate gauge requirements were static and came through, Bert, does that sound right to you? I'm not asking you for you to tell me for sure, I just need you to be like, that sounds right.
Yeah.
Yeah, just say that.
Yeah. That's my recollection, is that the gate, the gauge of the gate, that discussion is something that we've had as a standard for a long time, and we pulled that through, like happened to be new, and the newer code was the fact that we actually have landscape specific requirements for dumpster enclosures. The other thing that we do for flexibility purposes with an existing site is that, you know, if it's like an older apartment building or a small commercial building, and they're not doing a whole lot of work, we'll actually let them do like a metal framed walls that have Trex boards, and then the gates are still the steel. So there's a lot of flexibility, like Nick mentioned, for existing sites doing incremental improvements, where we view new development a little differently.
What's a Casey's on Forest?
I believe it's 24.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, that was the photo that they showed, and that was 24 gauge.
All right, so we do have 24, we did approve 24 before, for the exact same company that has just recently done two.
That's correct, it was like about a year and a half ago.
Okay.
Do we, yeah, I'll talk.
All right.
How long have we been, how long has Casey's been working on this site?
They had a pre-application, I think in late 2020, correct me if I'm wrong, so that's kind of like an initial scoping meeting to figure out, hey, we're interested in the site. The rezoning, like I mentioned, went before you guys in January of this year, was passed by council in February, this has been in their site plan, I think, late March, and now we're at this point in mid-August.
All right, thanks, Nick. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing officially, and what are your thoughts for a motion?
I'd like to move staff except for E and F, we have 24 gauge on the exact same type of building, just been done, and the E piece on the rock, right across the street is rock, the rock argument before seems like it's shallow, so I'm open friendly amendment, but I would move staff less E and F. I do agree strongly with the double door on the far side, that is, that's the primary frontage, if we're talking about walkability and what we've been attempting to do and invest in the city.
Is that a motion?
Yes, yes.
Well, I would like to.
Francis is killing me to stay here all night.
Make a friendly amendment, I would agree with, if you are removing the rock waiver, I would like to add that back in, I do think it adds a safety component with all that traffic that's on East 14th, and assuming that there will be a lot of pedestrian traffic as well from the high school, so if you would be willing to accept the friendly amendment to add the staff recommendation to not approve the rock.
Yeah, so I'm cool with that, so modifying the motion is say, I approve, or I move staff less F, so F would, yep, yep, happy with that.
I mean, I think that's a good amendment, I mean, when we think of high school kids, we linger, I mean, when I was a high school kid, I would linger, and we would just fool around, shoot the stuff and kick rocks, and I feel like it's a good safety concern and a good adjustment. Casey's, we love you guys, we appreciate you, but, yeah, I see people riding bikes and motorcycles through there, I'm east side, true and true, so, yeah, safety wise, I'd like to keep that.
All right, I agree with that as well, can we, see people shaking their heads.
Chris, can you clarify in your motion what the solution is for the door on the Des Moines Street side?
I think what staff is, is that Casey's has to come back with a design change that is approved, that staff is okay with, and I was saying there that my preference is a double door with glass or a top that would actually look like what 8th Street in Cedar Rapids is, but I don't think we're tied to that, I think we're giving staff flexibility on that to say, hey, come back with something we approve, we're okay with, we would still require it not to be rock, but with F cut means that you can do 24 gauge from tracking, is that?
Yeah, that's what I take from your motion, and I also pick from the direction that your preference for us as we visit is to explore double door or a window and not just settle on a transom above the door like they offered, because otherwise you could have, it might.
That's my preference, but I'm also an engineer, so I understand when you cut stuff, is where it is.
That's where we'll start as staff unless they can prove otherwise, so.
All right, motion on the floor from Chris, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And that's everyone.
Motion carries 10-0.
Any directors reports or anything, Jason?
Nope, not tonight, thank you.
All right, we're adjourned.